...night's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV and other media are in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, please let me know. Welcome, everybody, on a Thursday, a rainy Thursday evening, I should say. First agenda item is approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to read the minutes? If so, can I have a motion from Joe, second from Scott? Any discussion? All in favor? In unanimous. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody have any announcements? Scott?
I actually just want to congratulate one of our members, as well as one of our school teacher, on their fourth of their third child. Welcome our newest member of our school committee family, Declan George Holland. Born last week, Patrick?
Yes, Tuesday, last Tuesday.
So congratulations to you and your wife and to the rest of your family.
Thank you very much.
Any other member? I would like to say, oh, it's Patrick, I'm sorry.
I just, I had an opportunity, as did many school committee members, to attend the two forums we have on Tuesday. The first was the one on school choice and the second one was on homework. They were both very well attended, which I thought was terrific. I thought that the school choice was interesting, sort of the broad range of topics that parents spoke about, the reasons why they wanted to choice their child out of the district or considering choicing their children out of the district. And I think most encouragingly what happened, and I was talking with Kevin about this earlier, we had some parents who had made the determination that they wanted to leave Milford, and now we have an opportunity to talk to them and discuss, you know, what's happening in the school department and what's happening with their child and find a way to retain them in our district. I think honestly, it's a great model, and I think it was the first step towards a more, a process that we can use, a way to communicate with our parents and with our students to find out what their concerns are and sort of head off problems before they occur. So I just, I thought it was great. I want to thank all of the parents who came and were so willing to share their stories, some of them very personal, and it was a very good experience and I was very pleased to be there and I was glad that we set it up. So I want to commend the administration for setting it up and the parents for being so honest with us.
Thanks, thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, just one acknowledgement for a staff member. Wanted to acknowledge that the Massachusetts Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance recognized Rozelle Villegas, was selected for the 2015 Amelia Ryu Award. The recipient, this award is for a noteworthy award given to a member who's made significant contributions in the field of adapted physical education. Rozelle's been working for us for a number of years. If you may recall, she's been nominated a number of years for the Senator Burton-Azzi Award and works in our preschool, and it's just great to have this. So she'll be recognized in April at their honors and awards banquet. Just wanted to recognize her publicly for her hard work.
And I would like to send a congratulations to Coach Paul Seaver and the Milford Scarlet Hawks Boys varsity basketball team that won on Monday night, which means they get to go to the playoffs. So, great job to all of them and wish you the best. Thank you. Next agenda item is invitation to speak. Is anybody here invitation to speak? Seeing nobody, we move on again. Next agenda item is the Milford High School liaison to the school committee. Come on up, young man.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Chris issue, I'm the president of the class of 2017, and I just want to let you know some of the exciting things going on at the high school. As Mr. Walsh said, athletically, our basketball team was on fire recently, winning seven out of the last eight games to clinch a spot in the playoffs, which was really exciting. Musically, our band, along with the middle school band, had their annual vertical concert in our gymnasium, which was a great event. The entire gym was packed and, of course, the band was excellent. The art students have been painting murals at each wing of the building that represent the subjects taught in the wing. We have a great one of George Washington, history department, and so on. They also help to show our core values and our 21st century learning expectations. Also, the student exchange programs are going very well. Recently, seniors went to Middle School East on Wednesday to talk about their trip to China last June, and students are currently on the Italian exchange and the Spanish exchange. Ms. Spinnock has been posting pictures on the high school Twitter feed of all the places and events the students have been visiting, which has been nice to see, especially as a student, seeing all my friends. And on February 6th, Dr. Trembley, Mr. Walsh, and the Hospitality Tourism Management Program organized the World Language and Foreign Exchange Dinner Celebration at the Imperial Chevrolet Event Room. An evening of cuisine from China, Spain, Italy, and France were enjoyed by the students and the families. Also, which students created displays of their exchange experience and a video of the exchange programs, along with the new global citizenship program at MHS was highlighted. Aside from that, on February 5th, Ms. Spinnock hosted a parent coffee for parents to come out and talk to guidance counselors about the scheduling for next year. Also at this meeting, the parents got to meet Dr. McIntyre and ask questions about his vision as the upcoming superintendent. The New England Institute of Technology came to MHS recently to discuss secondary STEM programs with the students of the pathways program. Last night, our guidance department held the annual junior college planning night, and we had representatives from Assumption College and Framingham State University who joined the panel for the discussion. A representative from Framingham State University will be at the Milford Public Library every Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 PM to assist students and parents with applying to college. As you've heard, there have been a lot of exciting things happening. Thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you, very nice. Any member?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Great job.
Thank you, thank you. Next agenda item is approval of the 2016-2017 school calendar. Has everybody had an opportunity to look at the calendar? Does anybody have any discussion on it? Everybody likes the dates? Should we put some more school committee meetings in there or?
Just a couple of, just a couple of points here, as is required under the contract. The Milford Teachers Association has reviewed this and given their stamp of approval, and we looked at the dates to make sure we're compliant with the 180 days, obviously, of school. Also, we provided in here, which is a little bit different from previous years, you'll notice in August, on August 29th and 30th, our two professional days back-to-back, we did it this year deliberately to accommodate the transition, the move in the new school. So we typically have that day, in years past, before the high school's schedule changed, that day had happened in January as a semester conversion day, you may recall that. More recently, that day was moved to October, which lined up with a regional professional development day. So specialists, for example, around the entire Blackstone Valley region could participate in regional PD. But we felt for this year that moving the two days, we give staff a full day to settle in, especially with all the transitions of buildings this year. So that's the one departure from past practice. I wanted to just point that out to the committee.
Scott?
You know, one of the things that I've heard a lot of districts, we'd actually even talked about it, I believe about a year ago, obviously with the, this winter, knock on wood, it's enjoying the 50-degree weather, it's gonna be a little chilly tomorrow, I guess we're back in the 50s again next week, but last winter certainly with all the snow that we had that was going on, there were certainly a lot of discussions by a lot of, actually townspeople and members of the committee, of this committee as well, about the possibility of converting, converging February and April vacation into March. I'm very pleased with this calendar this year. We actually have room, if for some reason, and hopefully we don't, have a really bad winter next winter, we actually still have room for 10 additional days. Even through last winter, which was record snow, we still only ended up with five snow days last year, and the storms couldn't have hit at worst times. So we still have, we do have some room, and we still are able to maintain February and April break, giving that much-needed time to teachers as well as students and parents to get away and kick back and relax a little bit. So it's nice to see that we're able to do that and still accommodate and give us plenty of, plenty of room before that July 1st date.
Right.
Very pleased to see that. And back starting in August, which I know is a concern, we talked about last year, Jen, so. Barely.
Barely. Good to hear.
Any other member have a discussion? They have a motion, please? Motion from Patrick, second from Joe, to approve the Milford Public Schools 2016-2017 calendar. All in favor? In unanimous. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Next agenda item is instructional technology director position.
So, I'm gonna pass these out to somebody. If you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to combine the instructional technology director and the assistant superintendent search update, if that's okay?
That would be fine.
It's all in the same packet, so I figured it'd just, just for the sake of expediency. First, I'd like to update the committee on the assistant superintendent search. We had 63 candidates apply for the position, which is fantastic. We had a team of nine curriculum team leaders that reviewed the applications and identified 10 semifinalists. This week, we're in the process of interviewing those semifinalists, and that's a team of central office administrators and building administrators representing all levels across the district. Following that, this group will identify a final, a set of finalists, I'm anticipating two or three finalists from this group of 10, and a subcommittee of the interview team will conduct site visits and arrange for community forums for the finalists during the week of February, the weeks of February 29th and March 7th. Following that process, the school committee will meet with the recommended candidate at the March 17th school committee meeting, regular scheduled school committee meeting is kind of the plan.
Very nice. Any members have any questions for Dr. McIntyre? On this process? Scott?
Yeah, I guess my question is, you know, one of the things that we certainly, we've talked a lot about on this board is certainly the ability for our internal, our internal teachers and staff to be able to develop and build their careers within the district. Without tipping our hand too much here, I'm certainly hoping that there's some local candidates, there's some local candidates and internal candidates that'll be participating in this, in this next round as well.
Absolutely, I can say we have external and internal candidate interest for this position.
Excellent. Great. I think it's important that we continue to show that there's that, that there's that opportunity to continue to grow your career, which is a good thing, so.
Absolutely.
Good. Patrick?
Kevin, this seems a lot like the process that we used to hire you.
Yeah, very, very similar.
Yeah, I would think so. As you've been meeting with, as you've been meeting with the CTS, how much time have they had to sort of vet some of these applications and talk to each other about?
So, we had scheduled two afternoons, and we also offered time during the prep periods, and we actually extended it to, I think, the Monday during vacation or Tuesday during vacation, I forget the dates exactly, because of the number of candidates, they found that they had a very difficult time to go through all of the candidates in a thoughtful way in the kind of the two-hour blocks that were provided. So I feel like the group, the nine curriculum team leaders who were involved in this process actually did a fantastic job of identifying the 10 semifinalists.
Do you want to indicate that out of the 10, we had two?
Yes, yeah, that's right, too. So we're actually interviewing eight candidates, because two of the candidates they selected, which I think speaks to the quality of their work, are actually engaged in negotiations with other communities for assistant superintendent positions currently. So that group of 10 dropped to eight.
Can you characterize the pool of applicants? So, I mean, were we looking at principals, were we looking at current assistant superintendents, were we looking at directors of special education? I mean, who were the types of candidates? What was the pool like?
I think the vast majority of applicants were building-based administrators, the majority of that group were principals. We saw a number of central office administrators as well. I'd say about, again, I'm ballparking here, but like 60 to 70% of the candidates were building-based administrators. There was probably another 20 to 30% that were either currently assistant superintendents or directors of curriculum, depending on the size of the district.
Right.
And then there was maybe another 10 or 15% that kind of fell into a variety of categories, whether they were teachers, whether they were higher ed, so a kind of diverse background for that last kind of smaller group.
So that you weren't speaking to the diversity of the pool right there, you were speaking to the diversity of the sort of, the candidates that were close, we thought, right?
Okay, so you're talking about the semifinals?
I'm talking about both.
Okay. Yeah, I think it kind of worked out almost exactly the same. I mean, I think the pool kind of was reflective of the finals, or semifinals.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jen?
Yeah, I just think 63 is an unbelievable number of applicants to get for this position, and I think that's-
I thought it was fantastic, I agree.
-it just speaks volumes about the caliber of this district. When we heard from NASC how many openings there are, I know we were referring to superintendencies at that time, but it's the same thing, these jobs turn over a lot, and when you have 63 people interested, I think that that's a great feather in our cap, no matter who ends up with the position.
And I was impressed, honestly, because I went through each application myself as well, and I was very impressed with the quality of the applicant pool.
That's great.
And again, I felt like the CTS did an amazing job of kind of vetting the candidates and bringing them down to a group of 10.
Any other member? Cool. All right, you want to move on to your director of?
Absolutely. So Kathy Perry had made the recommendation to look at CELT, which stands for the Center for Educational Leadership and Technology, to help us with the Director of Information and Technology and Digital Learning search. And what I want to do is, we met with a gentleman today whose name was John Filippo, and you know how you meet somebody and within five minutes, you're just instantly just, it impressed this kind of understating, and I was blown away by this guy today, because his depth and breadth of knowledge around technology and education was amazing. He's worked with, his organization, I'm gonna pass these packets on, just so you get a sense of the organization, but he's worked with the LA Unified School District, New York City Public Schools, all over the country, and I believe internationally as well, and he's, I think he's considered one of the leading experts in the educational technology field in the US. He's often called to do, to serve as an expert witness in cases or to testify in front of governmental bodies around issues connected to technology. And he helped us with a number of things. We, and I'm gonna walk you through, these are slides, but rather than do a presentation, I figured I'd just walk, walk through for your benefit, Mr. Walsh.
I'm telling you, I was looking for a slideshow, but it's coming.
But we discussed the proposed position that we're about to do the search for, staffing structures in the Milford Public Schools, and kind of best practices around staffing structures, and then ways that he could support or his organization could support the search process. He really felt like the focus of the position should be a passion for the customer or the end user. He felt like that was critical, because if you lose that and you're just focused on the products that you're using, then you lose the whole purpose of educational technology in schools, because the real purpose is, we want these devices to be used to push, you know, learning and education forward in the hands of the students and the teachers, as well as build efficiencies for our district in terms of management systems. He, the proposed position and job description, he felt was, it was on the right path, it was exactly, kind of, he made a few suggestions, which I thought were right on point, but he felt like we were right in the ballpark with that. And he also felt the salary range should attract viable candidates, which is something that this committee kind of talked about and was concerned about, but he felt like, you know, based on kind of the market, as he understood it, we should be able to get some viable candidates in the salary range that we're looking at. He felt like the current proposed organizational structure will support the five main technology functions for schools, and I just wanted to list those out, because I thought that was interesting, because we had been thinking about it a couple different ways, and this kind of almost clarified things for me to some degree, and I know Kathy, you felt the same way.
Definitely.
So the five areas that he felt like the technology director would kind of oversee or function, they would oversee would be data management, reporting, and administrative systems, networks and communication systems, implementation, training, and operations, learning, media, and digital content, and then customer service and quality assurance, which he felt should be the overarching theme of everything this department does. The recommendations were to change the title of the position to Director of Information Technology and Digital Learning, and we had, what was the original?
Instructional to Information.
Instructional to Information, because he felt like that really captured the whole position. He also, which I thought was a fantastic recommendation, is, as part of this process, really start to think strategically about developing school-based technology teams that complement the district structures. So you have each building with a technology team that is thinking about the best ways to implement technology on the ground at that particular level. And that would include our technology integration teachers, an administrative representative, a couple of teachers, and probably someone on the front lines, like a secretary, who's using our information systems on a regular basis and a little more in-depth. The focus should be on the end user or customer, which is the students and teachers, and he really emphasized that, you know, even if you bring in a number of like network or tech-type people, there's always gonna be a need for consultants or tech supports. So, you know, whether we, you know, although we have like a Jonathan KPC and we have some, you know, some other supports in the district, there's always gonna be a need for that, that tech support, because nobody is gonna be able to do, you know, wiring, firewalls, servers to a level that we're really gonna want, so we're functioning at kind of a consistently high level. So in terms of the support they're gonna provide for the search process, they're gonna help us with candidate recruitment, and he felt like he had access to a pretty significant network across the country and locally as well. He knew a lot of, a lot of folks locally that may be interested in a position like the one we're proposing. And then he'd help us evaluate and vet the candidates for the interview and selection committees, so really look at their background, their experience, their skill set, and see if it's a match for the Milford community, and someone who's really gonna bring vision and push the district forward, and keep us kind of where we want to be in terms of technology, both from an infrastructure perspective, but also from that customer service and end-user experience perspective. The last slide, I just wanted, I want to throw out a proposed timeline. This is, the other thing he emphasized is, this is the prime recruiting season, and this is when, you know, these types of positions are kind of in play typically. And he recommended that we post the position as soon as possible, so I'm recommending we post tomorrow if the committee agrees with me. Close the applications April 1st, so give about four weeks to collect applications, screen the candidates the week of April 4th, interview candidates the week of April 11th, and hopefully have a recommendation on the finalist for the April 28th school committee.
Any members?
You didn't tell them the best part.
I'm gonna let Kathy do that.
Well, the best part was-
Because I give Kathy so much credit, because this guy was awesome today.
It's free.
He really was phenomenal.
It's free.
Because-
Because that was, because that was my question, I wish this got this. I was waiting.
Twenty-five years ago, believe it or not, working with a superintendent that hired me, my first education position, his name is Gordon Spence, and he's long since been retired, but we're still very friendly, and he is a good friend of Mr. Filippo, who started the CELT company, you know, 25 years ago. So he joked and said, you know, because anybody that's worked with Gordon Spence in the past really needs to have this as a free, free to cost to the district, so he's gonna do it free in, as well as the fact that we're in the Blackstone Valley area, and he wanted to donate some of his time to us, so.
Wow, very nice.
He's gonna do it free of charge.
Wow, that's great.
And he's gonna be a great advocate, he's invited us into Marlboro, we're gonna go to the office and be able to pick his brains some more with whatever we find between now and then. We need information on, we're gonna spark his interest in that, so there you go. It worked out really well. Too funny.
I think the gen point, saying 63 applicants for the assistant superintendent speaks for our district, and to have somebody want to come in and volunteer into our district says three things about us, you know? They must be looking at us and say, we can capture them and get them going, where can we go from there? So that's great, great. Yeah, Joe?
Talking to this guy, what is some of the feedback that he might have had from other districts, like placing people in other schools, say like Holliston, for example? Why place the guy in Holliston? Are they doing well there? Have they achieved what they, Holliston has wanted or something?
There's actually, the packet that I sent around, he put a couple of case studies in there about kind of the approach he takes and why, and why he really looks at fit is kind of a critical piece and what the needs are of the district, and we really talked about it. I think we spent about, maybe an hour and a half or two hours with him this morning, kind of going, kind of piece by piece. He'd reviewed our technology plan, he'd reviewed our organizational structure, and I think he really, his focus was kind of what I talked about, like how do you get somebody who can really, is kind of a constant learner, who can push the organization forward, who can provide kind of that managerial oversight, and really make sure that, you know, the teachers in the classrooms, the administrators, everybody doing the day-to-day stuff is never worrying about the technology, as well as bringing things in that are really pushing the learning forward for the organization, and ensuring like, you know, from just a kind of data management perspective, that we're becoming more efficient in that way as well. Or kind of, some of the key points or some of the-
Yeah, one of the reasons I asked, because you know, this is like one of the things that everyone's looking for and hears on the radio, so I'm sure that we-
Did that answer your question, Joe?
Yeah, it did. Just make sure, you know, we're doing it the right way and everyone hears that we are, so.
Yeah. Sure. So I think it's, I was glad, I'm very happy to hear, obviously, that we've got this resource that's available to us. Was there a discussion, did he have a conversation with any of our other, just thinking about the needs of the district, with, whether it was World Bank or any of the contractors, just talking about where we are in our process here, and how this interacts at a town as well as a, as well as a school district level? Was there a conversation, kind of talking about, hey, here's where we are, here's what's led us to having this position being sort of created, and what we're kind of dealing with and what this person's gonna be dealing with? He felt like, yeah, he felt like our situation was not dissimilar to what's happening in a lot of other places, not only across Massachusetts, but across the country, because he felt like what's happening is that towns and schools kind of have different needs to some, some degree, and I don't want to speak completely for him, but I'm kind of paraphrasing, correct me if I misspeak, but I think he's saying that our, our kind of process or kind of where we are now compared to where we were a couple of years ago is not dissimilar to what's happening in a lot of other places. So we're not, we're not kind of an outlier where, you know, things are happening very differently here in Milford. He felt like things are, it's kind of a similar set of circumstances that kind of got us to this point, that are happening in a lot of places, again, across Massachusetts, across the country, and it wasn't, who did we speak with last year, who kind of had a similar, it was a state agency?
That was Massachusetts State Agency, the Technology Department for the state of Mass.
There was, there was an acronym attached to that, too, and I can't remember it, but they had a similar kind of a comment as well. I don't know if you remember that, Bob?
I do.
Because I think one of the things, this was a process that was clearly broken in the past, right? So the selection for this process and we're, we've changed up how we're, how we're going about it. One of the things that I, I certainly have a very strong desire to make sure, as I know many, many other members of the committee as well, to really make sure, it's important we get this right this time. And so I'm very glad that we've used, that we're leveraging this resource. That's why I want to see, is this guy know kind of what our process has been talked about, the fact that we've been through- We give him the history as well, yes, yes. I mean, this was not, I want to make sure, and forgive the expression, I want to make sure this wasn't a dog and pony show, too, that we really kind of said, hey, by the way, we've been through four in three years, and like this has been really kind of a mess for a while, and it was a lot of infighting between the Board of Selectmen, the school committee, and, you know, this has been sort of, sort of, sort of messy for the last couple of years here. I mean, we've progressed, I think, substantially over the last 12 months from having data storage in people's basements, which is still horrifying to think about. So you've gone through, this was a fully disclosed- Absolutely, he got, he got the complete picture of, and Kathy did a very nice job of walking step by step over the last, what, seven or eight years.
And I think the message that I understood that he made that was very clear was that for this type of position is where you want to spend your money, and you want it to be about the education, education and the people and the end users that are gonna be receiving it, and for your resources, for your network infrastructure, keep that contracted out if you need to. That's not where you're gonna get the value for your dollar in education. And we went through the whole history of our network infrastructure, I showed him the proposal that we have that we're going out for E-Rate, where our buildings will be, I mean, he just had to look at a document and he could process it.
It was pretty, it was pretty amazing.
Amazing, so he was right on the target. He, he gave us a lot of credit and kudos for our IT advisory and how we went about our review for the one-to-one proposals that we have. He thought that was, you know, right in line with how you should do a one-to-one, or bring your own device. He was very impressed in a lot of ways with the way that Milford has handled a lot of their technology vision, so he just wanted to bring us to the next step and gave us some suggestions on how to do that.
Thank you.
No?
Yeah, you guys mentioned it earlier today, this guy's really seen it all, you know, he's very experienced, even though he's based here in Marlboro, I think you mentioned he's more of a national consultant.
He is.
Can you talk a little bit about some of the cities and?
Yeah, I mean, he's worked with the LA Unified School District, he's worked in New York, he's worked in a number of large districts in Colorado and Texas. So I feel like he's really bringing a national, I wouldn't say an international perspective on how to bring the best person into Milford, and I think he's going to use his very extensive network to help us kind of recruit, and once we get candidates who've applied, to maybe identify the best candidates to kind of move forward with, and is either, you know, is part of a process.
I believe his doctor in technology was from Harvard.
It was, yeah.
So, I mean, he's been in, doing this, he was with CELT for-
Is he an Oxford guy? He's a local guy.
He's a local guy, and he's done really well with this company, and what he's done professionally is amazing. I mean, he gave us his background, studying as a teacher, and moving right into this, building this company and seeing the future. I mean, he gave us his background, starting as a teacher and, um, moving right into this, building this company and seeing the future.
And that's what I really liked about him too, cause I think he understands the needs of classroom teachers. I mean, he's been out of the classroom for a while, but I think that, that kinda grounds-
He's been in the classroom.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Kevin, what, what if any role will that committee have that was formed to help in this, this process?
So I think there's still gonna be, I think there's still gonna be a key part of the process because what I see happening is, um, John wor- working with us to identify kind of a group of candidates and that committee kinda vetting those candidates through a process. So there's a couple of community representatives, our technology team, a couple of administrators, I believe a couple of school committees.
Nothing's changed on that.
No, 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 I think we're gonna keep that, we're gonna keep that in place. But we're gonna use, um, the services of Selt and, and Dr. Filippo to, um, to really kind of identify a set of candidates, kinda vet those candidates for this committee to really kind of interview and, and really kinda, is this, are they a fit for Milford? Cause ideally, we're gonna have a group of candidates that all are qualified and we're looking at fit. That's really the, that's really my hope.
Okay.
Yeah? I'm just going to add, one, I'm really happy to see that the position we posted as soon as tomorrow. Cause I agree that it is prime time and we don't wanna waste, not waste, but we don't want to see any more time go by. And just to reflect on where the, this committee and this group has been in terms of technology, you know, my time on the board has been two years, there's obviously a number of years before that. But just to think of where we are right now with this really robust job description, um, and plans to actually get this position up and running that we've been talking about for so long. I don't think anyone would be able to say that we haven't very thoroughly vetted the type of job, the type of person that we're looking for. And, you know, I just think this meeting today was kinda like the icing on the cake of yet one more step towards making sure we're moving in the right direction, moving on the right path. And all the while, technology, while it isn't where we want it to be, it hasn't stopped. And I know, for example, my daughter came home just this week and said the Chromebooks were rolled out in her history class. And, you know, so things are progressing and you can see it only getting better with this kind of knowledge that'll hopefully help us to acquire for Milford. So I think that was a perfect, um, kind of last piece before it gets publicized in terms of a job posting. So thank you.
And, and I love the fact that he's on-
John and Joe with their work on the subcommittee, it's been great.
Yeah, and I love the fact that he's gonna be part of our process and part of our team to kinda get this person, um, into a position in Milford.
Thank you. Any other member? End of the discussion. Move on to our next agenda item. Climate, Culture, and Morale Presentation in Progress Report.
All right, get to break out the PowerPoint? Is that? Do I do it up here?
Yeah, I just wanna grab, Rob, do you wanna give me a little sound mic?
All right, anybody hear me okay?
All right, so, um, as you all know, the, the Climate, Culture, and Morale Committee came about from a conversation we had during the, the contract negotiations. Um, and I'm just gonna read a, a short description that's taken directly from the current contract. Uh, the School Committee and the Teachers Association are in full agreement that the school system best operates and the interests of the students are best served when there is a positive climate and culture, including free exchange of ideas, views, and concerns between and among teachers, administrators, and the school committee. The parties also recognize that the day-to-day pressures of providing educational services can cause communication to deteriorate and misunderstandings to develop with resulting adverse effects upon morale and educational services. In an effort to keep lines of communication open in all directions and where possible to improve the educational climate and the morale among staff members, it is agreed that there shall be established a committee on climate, culture, and morale. Um, so as you can see here, um, the association designated one member from each of the separate school buildings to participate along with the association president, Nick Molinari, the superintendent, and then myself as the rep- as the, the school committee representative. And, um, as the language in the contract describes, the primary purpose of the committee is to improve communication and to serve as a sounding board for staff concerns. It's also an opportunity for us to share best practices among the different schools and create working groups to tackle specific issues that have been identified and take the necessary steps to improve those situations. The school climate, school culture, morale have been identified, uh, or have been defined in a number of different ways. And sometimes these terms have been used interchangeably. The term school climate refers to our perception of the school while school culture is used to, to refer to the actual state of the school. So, for example, if the school building itself were in a state of disrepair, this would be an aspect of school culture. Uh, but how people feel about this and how they see it, for example, our school is a wreck and makes me feel like no one cares about the students here, or it is a beautiful building that needs some repair, but I love it, uh, reflects school climate. So what are we aspiring to here? What is the climate like for teachers in, in high-performing schools? Um, and we got this information directly from the National School Climate Center. So teacher, i- i- in a, in a high-performing school, um, teachers believe they are part of a team that is making a difference in the lives of students, their work has purpose. Uh, teachers are proud of their colleagues and believe that their colleagues are proud of them. Everyone contributes, shares, and learns, and disagreements are resolved promptly, promptly and professionally. Uh, teachers believe their administrators care about them and their success. They see administrators as a source of support and leadership. Um, so if you have a positive climate, teachers feel respected, valued, and appreciated. Um, and there are also a number of studies that have demonstrated a positive climate has a direct impact on student engagement and academic success. Students are eager to atten- eager to attend school and feel a personal connection to the adults at the school. Students feel safe physically and emotionally. They know that the adults will do whatever is necessary to create a safe and comfortable environment. And students believe they can succeed academically, that their hard work will, will pay off. So as you know, we developed a survey to gauge the climate and morale of our district and solicit some feedback from the staff. Um, what is it that is working well in our schools to contribute towards a positive climate? Uh, and what areas need to be addressed? And the staff was given several options to provide feedback. They could speak with a climate, culture, morale representative, uh, complete the online survey or they could use some of the suggestion boxes. Uh, and what you see here is the total number of responders. So we received, um, uh, or ninety-six staff members responded to the survey. Uh, of the ninety-six, seventy-eight provided a response as to what was working well and a total of eighty-six provided a response as to, um, where we needed some improvement. Okay? Um, so as you probably saw from reading the survey responses, um, that were shared previously, they were all over the spectrum. And the surveys were anonymous by design and encourage more candid feedback. But that also makes it more difficult to respond to specific concerns or misunderstandings if we don't know who provided the responses. Um, there were some broad themes and there were, um, some very specific and individualized, uh, responses. So in order to create some structure and group the responses to try and identify the major themes, we relied on some guidance from the, the National School Climate Center. Um, and what they've done is they've outlined twelve dimensions that most comprehensively shape our perception of school climate. Uh, these dimensions divided into five major categories. Safety, teaching and learning, interpersonal relationships, institutional environment, and staff. The safety dimensions refer to the physical and emotional safety of students and the rules and procedures in place to ensure that students are, are safe. Uh, teaching and learning refers to a positive professional student-teacher, school relationship, social and emotional skills training, civic education, and positive support for, for learning. Interpersonal relationships refers to student social support from educators and parents, the level of respect students have for, for one another, uh, school and community engagement, and student and parent leadership. Institutional environment refers to the physical environment of the school. And then staff refers to the support received from leadership and the attitudes and relationships among the different staff members. So we broke it out and we started to, to look for those themes. Um, the top three dimensions that teachers felt are working well i- in our schools. Uh, the first was professional relationship. So the staff said they have a great relationship with their colleagues. Uh, the second was school connectedness and engagement. Teachers feel a very strong connection or bond with their schools or, or departments. Uh, and then the third was leadership. The teachers feel that the administration is, is being supportive of, of their needs. Um, and to just give you, you know, a couple of examples of some of the, the, the feedback. Um, we have one here, many staff members are dedicated to supporting one another and promoting kindness within the building. Also, our administrators respect us and treat us as the professionals we are. Uh, another example was, I think it begins with our principal, she has a very positive demeanor. And I think it sets a great tone for how students, staff, parents, and administration interact with each other. Um, I also see a lot of teachers who are more than willing to work outside their hours of work to help kids before and after school and sometimes even during their preps. They are extremely generous with their time. Uh, another way our school has a positive climate is the caring way we all support each other. People in this school really, really care about each other, it definitely feels like a family. Everyone is so helpful to everyone else, at least in my experience. Whenever I am lost, confused, or stuck, I know there are administrators, counselors, CTLs, teachers, um, who will gladly help me. So the, just two examples of some positive responses that, that we received. Um, and then in terms of areas for improvement, uh, the top dimensions that teachers felt should be improved upon were, um, rules and, and norms. Uh, and this really reflected the feedback that we received regarding, uh, the discipline and behavioral concerns. Uh, the second was support for learning. Um, you know, there's room for improvement with professional development. Uh, there's some anxiety associated with the school transitions, um, new and continuing demands that are placed on the staff and the teacher, evaluation process all factored in, uh, under support for learning. Um, the third was professional relationships. Teachers feel somewhat isolated at times and, um, or that, you know, not all staff pulls their, their weight. Uh, leadership was the fourth, uh, not enough support from administration and a lack of communication. Uh, and then the fifth was physical surroundings. So there were some concerns that were raised regarding the cleanliness and the maintenance of our schools. Uh, there seems to be some confusion over who's responsible for what between the night crew and the day shift and also the quality of service being provided by the, the contracted service provider. Um, and this is consistent with the feedback that we received last night from Manny Canero, who is retiring as a head custodian from, from Woodland. Um, so if we jump ahead.
Hey Joe, what, uh, what I find interesting on this, as I was going through just, uh, on, on the presentation here, it was interesting that the leadership piece, that it was almost exactly the same number of responses for both positive as well as needs for improvement, and it was the exact same sentence. Positive pieces, so the nineteen respondents and said, from a leadership perspective, administration creates, uh, creates and communicates a clear vision, is accessible and supportive to school staff. On the needs for improvement, it's the exact same sentence. And it was seventeen respondents for needs improvement, nineteen that says it was positive. But it was the exact same line, so you can definitely see there's a, there's a division.
The indicators are identical in both, that's how you measure it. So if you look at any of the categories, indicators are gonna be identical.
Yeah, I just, it, it was the only one that was literally the exact same line, it was interesting. And the numbers were almost identical for respondents, both, both positive as well as needs for improvement, so.
Any other questions before I get to some next steps?
Let's just finish, Joe, and then we'll, uh-
All right. Um, so in, in terms of, of the next steps, you, obviously communication is, is critical. We've already seen an improvement in communication and it's really a credit to representatives that are serving on, on this committee as well as the principals who are working very cooperatively to discuss and address the concerns. Um, you know, these can be very difficult conversations, as you can imagine. Um, but it's important to have that, that honest analysis, uh, of the feedback and really set the stage for taking specific steps to improve the culture, climate, and morale. Um, we need to create a sense of working towards solutions together instead of only talking about the problems or making believe that problems don't exist throughout the district. Um, the leadership team is, is working on several professional development opportunities um, that, you know, we can have Bob talk about a little bit later. Uh, and we formed two different task forces. Um, the first task force is the discipline task force, which will work with the administration to address the discipline behavioral issues that have been raised. Um, you know, not only have we received feedback from this survey, but as you know, um, we've also received some feedback from the school choice discussion, the Metro West Health Survey, and directly from, from some of our students in regards to discipline and, and behavior. Um, so this really needs to be a priority within the district. Um, the other task force is the facilities task force. Uh, we'll be looking at the physical environment. Uh, on the surface, it seems like it's an easy fix. We need to just clearly define the roles and responsibilities and create some sort of punch list to address some of the issues that, that were raised. Um, and then lastly, we, we also need to continue to support and build upon, you know, what is working well and, and celebrate the positive things that are happening throughout the district. Okay? Um, and then I'm not gonna get into detail on, on some of these, on the last three slides. Um, what I wanna just highlight here is that, you know, this is information that we shared with the committee and, and with the principals. Um, you know, leaders come in many different shapes and sizes, the school committee, administration, teachers, students, and parents. We all have to share in the responsibility of creating a positive learning environment. And that, these next three slides just outline some of the traits and qualities that, um, we should all try and, and model in order to build and sustain a positive climate and, and improve morale.
Yeah, I just do, uh, I think Joe did a great job laying all this, laying this out. Um, really not dissimilar from the process we employed with the transition committee. Um, this group, the Culture, Climate, and Morale Committee came together, did some brainstorming and just kinda laid out there what all the concerns are in the building. And, you know, you, you, you have an earful from everybody. And it came time though to really need to focus that, to say, well, how can we now really, we're not gonna just sit around and just talk about what the problem, well, how, how we can bring some solutions to this. Um, so that was the next step, which is how we arrived at the discipline task force and the facilities task force. These were clearly emergent themes that came up. The, uh, and as, as Joe pointed out, the discipline piece, you know, we took input from the, uh, the school choice forum and Cory, thanks for your work in all the school choice data you've collected. So the, the forum was sort of the last piece of our data collection from families who've made a choice to, to stay in Milford. Um, you know, uh, who, who, who served a tacit school choice. They've stayed here in this community when they could go elsewhere. Uh, families who chose to come to Milford who live elsewhere and certainly families who've chosen to go out of Milford for whatever those reasons are. We've had some of that anecdotal information from survey data, from phone calls, and then most recently this week, the, uh, the school choice parent forum that we hosted, uh, on Monday. Uh, that information, we heard from parents, and not a lot came out around, um, around facilities from, from that group. But certainly around discipline, issues of bullying, things that emerged in the Metro West survey. Scott, you pointed out earlier on about kids and their feeling safe and having adults and all those data points. Uh, when you hear families that may have chosen out of Milford for a, could be a perception of school fights at Milford High School, um, which is not, that data is not supported by the data that we submit that we have on record. So there's clearly a perception issue around the same time as that there's the reality of how kids are feeling if they're made to feel unsafe. So we, we really, and, and then there's the, the, the sort of mechanical aspect of student discipline. What I mean by that is, um, a teacher in a classroom, uh, is frustrated and certainly the morale and the climate of a building can be frustrating if a teacher sends a student to the office and, uh, there's not that, closing the loop of how was that handled? And there's a fine line between, uh, the school department revealing how we're disciplining every kid in a public w- way and there's a, another man, means of the teacher communicating back, or the administrator communicating back to the teacher saying, I saw Scott and we did this and this is the consequence and we wanna communicate that and close the loop back to you. Um, and we found, actually in the process of doing this work, there was actually a, a fairly simple solution to the mechanical part of that. And that is just a simple technology where we have this database. And if a teacher is logging a behavioral problem and the administrator is dealing with a behavioral problem, they go in, we've created a required field now, where before they may just have to select that it was handled. Um, it's actually a drop-down field administratively handled. And, and one of the feedback we got from teachers was, well, I know it's administratively handled, but what does that mean? You know, they don't, they're left in the dark and their perception can be, well, I tell the administration and nothing gets done. And that's a perception, it's a workplace environmental issue that we had to address. And the, with a very simple remedy to that, to a first step to that, is by requiring a field where comments are required before you can leave that, that application in the database. So saying, it's been administratively handled, but here's how. What we haven't yet solved is the way that communication loop is now closed back to the referring teacher. Uh, what they could do right now is log into the database, select that student, and go and read it. But it's a little bit cumbersome, especially if you're a specialist, say, working with three or four hundred kids. Um, that, that could be a lot, depending on how many students refer to the office. But if we could put something in there like we do now, we have this, we have this, uh, as I understand it from having this discussion, for students on IEPs, for example, let's say a team chair goes in and makes a modification on an IEP. Um, it is a note, there's a, you know, gonna email alert that's kicked out to that, to the teachers who are relevant, you know, who work with that child, saying, be sure to log into the system and see these updates. It's a very simple workflow. Uh, it comes at a, at a small price, but it, a price that's worth spending, I think, to do. The, uh, the unfortunate side of innovation with, uh, working with our current student information management system is that you pay when you innovate it, but then everybody other district benefits from your innovation at no cost. So people are, are, are out there innovating on our behalf yet. So we think we can have a pretty, um, good solution to that one. We wanna, we wanna vet that by this discipline task force and find out, is this really the root of the problem? Is there something bigger? Our, our kids, uh, there's a perception that, um, I think it's a perception only, but it's a perception that administrators are taking the side of students when, when teachers need support. And that can certainly create an environment where you wouldn't wanna come to work every day if you're feeling like you're not being supported by your administrator. Um, but we wanna break down the, the myth from the reality there. Uh, and certainly- And certainly, if parents are telling us, as they have told us, that they're leaving Milford because of a perception of a lot of fights at the high school, they're not saying perception, they're saying there's a lot of fighting at the high school, but that data doesn't corroborate when we look at it. So we think that's a good, useful group, and you see who the assigned members are on the PowerPoint. The other group, oh yeah, go ahead.
Before I jump to the other groups, so, and we probably saw it as you read through some of the feedback that was given, you know, we heard loud and clear from speaking to this committee that, now using Mr. Toki as an example in Middle School East.
Right.
The approach that he's taking there by walking the halls, by engaging the students, is having a very positive impact on student behavior at that, in that building. And we're seeing a similar thing here at the high school as well, with some of the security people that we have walking through our halls. So how can we take that and replicate that at Stacy? And that's one of the conversations that this committee is going to be having. The other thing that they're going to be looking into, and I don't know, Kevin, if you just want to touch on it real quick, is sort of the social and emotional learning aspect, because that sort of ties into this as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So one of the things we're going to do as a district, and we've already started this process, is we're going to develop a social emotional learning committee to really look at what, first, what we're providing K through twelve currently, and then seeing where some of the gaps are, and trying to almost create a continuum with programs and services. Because we really want to see students, all students be in a place where they can actually access the curriculum on a consistent basis, and that's going to be a big part of that committee's work.
The other piece, and by the way, when we mentioned this, when Joe and I were at the meeting, we mentioned this to the members, they all felt that this is great now, you know, focused work that this group can do and really see some positive outcomes. A leadership team meeting we had the other day as well, I reminded the principals, talked to the principals about this ahead of time, and reminded them that the expectation from me certainly is that the discussion between the liaison and the principal is not work to be delegated to another administrator. The principal must be engaged in that discussion with the liaison. Whether they want to hear the information or not is irrelevant. They've got to engage the discussion. Now, some of it may be petty, some of it may be complaining, and maybe just more suggestions than it is, but no matter how you look at it, if there's a perception of something that could be better, that's not working well, it affects the workplace environment, and we want to make this as a happy and thriving school district as we can make it. The other group that we felt came, and as Joe mentioned, we thought it was a fairly, although things always start off sounding like they're simple.
Right.
Until you get into the weeds of it, but there certainly is probably going to be some contractual implications to the discussion, which is why I wanted to have, you know, Kathy Perry as part of that discussion. And I know Rob, and thanks for coming out tonight, Rob, as well, for your work. You know, you're very highly regarded by the school committee, by the community, for the work you've done over the years. And you don't come before us very often, and you're welcome to come up if you'd like to.
Welcome to the panel, Rob.
It's up to you if you want.
Yeah.
The, the, Rob's a man of very few words. E.F. Hutton. But we put this group together to take a look at what we think is also, as much as the perceptions around whether or not student discipline is being managed well, when you walk into a building that's clean or that's not clean, there's a certain kind of pride that comes with walking into your place of work and how you feel in terms of how that is a, is a, an effect of your, the culture and climate of a building. So the goal of this task force is to take a look at, and Rob, you may be able to help us to clarify that a bit, but we have, by way of contract, we have, all but two of our school buildings have an agreement of contracted services. I want to put on record, because I know that there's some concern, at least by one of soon-to-be former custodian who addressed the committee, concerned that, you know, we're sort of privatizing and moving in this, in this approach, and it's not effective. And, you know, certainly we'll look at that and see whether or not we could do better with our vendor work. But we've not taken jobs away, or we've not cut custodians over the years as part of doing this contracted services agreement. We still manage, again, as two schools of the district that still have that, and we still have our day custodians. What may be improved, though, is the trade, is the sort of the handoff, the passing of the torch between the end-of-the-day shift guy and the night crew coming in, if that's a contracted crew, or if it's even a Milford Schools employee, to make sure that it's not the evening crew saying, well, that's the day guy's job, and the day guy's saying, well, that's the cleaning crew's job. And we have to get past that, because in the end, if the sinks aren't cleaned, then the sinks aren't cleaned, and someone's got to assume ownership of that. So Rob and I have talked about this, and, you know, this task force, I think, will come together, and from Kathy's perspective as well, we'll look at the contract language and see, where do we go? Where is it maybe broken down? Rob, I think it might be helpful for the committee to hear from you what you described to me today about the levels of sort of safeguards that we talked about. Would you mind just maybe coming to the committee about that piece?
Sure. So we have, like Bob said, we have four of the buildings outsourced. We piloted in two thousand and twelve, Woodland, which went so well, we moved forward with Memorial and Brookside and Middle School East. So what happens is, we have our day custodian, our staff member, in the building for the day shift. They leave the building at two thirty, the cleaning crew, the contracted cleaning crew comes in at between five thirty and six and has a schedule of cleaning that they're required to do on a daily basis. In between that time, we back up, we also send a custodial staff member, our staff member, into the building from two thirty to four thirty, so that all the staff members can get out of the building if there's any after-school activities. They monitor those after-school activities and help clean up if there's an issue. So what happens right now is, in each building, there's a board that a staff member can go to and write a complaint or an issue or a concern regarding the cleaning contractor, not the day custodian, the cleaning contractor, the night crew. Let's take, for example, if Classroom A didn't feel the classroom was vacuumed that night, they could go to the board and write, you know, teacher says in Classroom A, the fact that the room wasn't cleaned adequately. That information is then reviewed by the building principal, passed on to myself via email, you know, to, and also to the foreman, that is in charge of all four buildings at night, and to the cleaning contractor, one of the heads of the cleaning contractor. If that issue isn't resolved within the next day, then I'll get another email from the principal saying, listen, we asked for this to be resolved, it hasn't been resolved, can you please look into it? And that's where I step in. And at that point, I'll first contact the foreman and ask, did you receive this email? And if you didn't receive the email, then we have our, an issue with our email, because, you know, this can't happen. If he did receive the email and felt that it was addressed, then I bring someone above that foreman out to review the site, which, like I said, since two thousand and twelve I've been doing this, there's been a handful of times that we've had to literally take someone above the foreman to the site to review the site, meet with the principal, get their feedback. Some founded, some not founded. I feel the process has worked very well. You made a comment earlier that you feel that there's either friction or a lack of communication between the day and the night.
Well, there may be. Again, we're hearing that, you know, from our feedback, from the Culture, Climate, Morale. So it may, it may be, it may be just a perception.
Right.
Which is what we want to get to, you know. The other piece that you've added this year, through our technology, you've added the help desk ticket through, for, through school dude that we use for technology, but we also use it for facilities. And, you know, as part of this task force work, we can make sure that that's effectively being used, and are the staff aware about the board, for example?
Are the staff well aware about the board? The principals are well aware about the board. The board's been in place since we've outsourced, and it's been working perfectly. The school dude right now, I've asked the principals not to put custodial issues on school dude. I think, I feel that the administrators in the building, if they walk into a building and they see an issue that they feel is either unhealthy, unsafe, dirty to any effect, they should ask the day custodian that we're paying the eight hours to be there to go address that issue. Now, if the day custodian feels it isn't his or hers job at the time, the reality is they're getting paid to work that day. And go address the issue, put it in writing that it wasn't addressed by the cleaning contractor, and we'll deal with that in the future. But there is no reason for any custodial staff that we're paying to be on site to claim it isn't his or her job. I think that's some of the friction that we're, that we're returning to find. They feel as if something was missed by the contractor, it isn't their job because we're paying someone to clean it. Well, yes, someone should have cleaned it maybe better at the time, it wasn't done, but you're here getting paid, go take care of it, please. Very simple.
Yeah, fair point.
And now, again, with the school dude, I don't want the school dude bogged down with a teacher asking that, or claiming or showing that their trash wasn't emptied. School dude is more in place on the maintenance part for critical issues that pertain to the facilities, not the cleaning aspect. The cleaning aspect can be handled in-house throughout, with the principals, vice principals, and the day custodian, myself, and this mechanism that's been in place for the past four years.
So I think what can happen with this task force can be, an outcome of that is just making this process clear to everybody. Because it may not be clear to everybody that, as to how, what should be reported, what shouldn't be reported, even though that conversation may have happened with you and the principal, maybe it didn't get communicated within the building the way it should have. So I think this is a way for us to make sure it's clearly communicated district-wide. And I don't, I don't see this task force having the kind of depth that the other will need in terms of getting to some solutions, I really don't. But I think that will help to alleviate some of these.
No, any feedback is, you know, welcome. If there's a better way to do it, then I think we're all open to that, correct?
Yeah, and you'll be part of it. So you'll hear it firsthand. And then what's great about that is that people who may have a perception one way or the other, you can help set the record straight.
Right.
By being in the same room. So I think that will be, I think this, in my view, in talking with Joe about this and the, and the committee, the, you know, the Culture, Climate, and Morale Committee, we think these are two good focal points to take on from now through the end of the school year. So I don't know if that more or less captures our next steps as well?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. And then, obviously, the communication, and that's all part of this, but we're already seeing an improvement there, and that's something that everyone's focused on continuing to improve.
Yeah, the leadership piece, is that what you mean, the leadership piece, the second bullet on that slide, the leadership team professional development opportunities, Kevin has been working with us, using, we've been using a number of different professional books. The current book we're using is Leadership on the Line, and we're using Leadership on the Line as a conversation starter around improved communication among leadership team and having common language around that. And the principals will be presenting, actually, so it shows that they have some ownership of the content. And principals will present to their colleagues at our, at our next monthly leadership team meeting. So we're trying to address as best we can what we're hearing for feedback from a variety of different means.
Good. Any discussion, question? Patrick?
Joe, Joe mentioned Bob Toki, and I hope, I'm going to jump on that just a little bit, because Bob Toki's doing an amazing job for us in Middle School East. And it's been such a change, the morale in that building, and the way students feel about the building, and the way teachers feel about the building, having him in place. And a few, a few months ago, I think it was, Joe, Jed, and I were having a conversation in the policy subcommittee meeting, and it was about discipline, sort of two forms of discipline, right? So there's discipline that delivers a consequence, and there's discipline that delivers a desired outcome. And one thing Bob Toki excels at is discipline that delivers a desired outcome. So it's not about student, you didn't bring your progress report in, signed by your parent or legal guardian, and so therefore, student, you shall have detention, and so student, go to detention. The idea for the consequence is to achieve the desired outcome. And if there's no engagement with that student, so the student understands the importance of having to get that progress report signed, and if the student doesn't understand that if that progress report isn't signed by the parent or legal guardian, that there's going to be some continuing engagement until that student does understand why it must be signed, that type of discipline delivers our desired outcome. And it's not punishment, it's not sit in the classroom, close the door, we're going to wrap your knuckles with a ruler. It's, there's a reason why we have these rules in place, and there's a reason why you have to abide by these rules, and so we're going to take the steps necessary to make sure that you understand them. And so when it comes to discipline in our buildings, I don't think it's necessary to reinvent the wheel. I think we got someone who does a really good job of it. And one thing that I think we could be better at as a school department is taking the people who are, who excel at best practices in certain fields and rolling that knowledge out so it becomes institutional, so everyone across our school district can use it. And so I think that when we're looking at correcting some of these, these discipline issues that have popped up in the surveys, we already have someone who knows how to do it. And so if we could tap into that knowledge, and we could tap into that leadership, and find a way to make that desired outcome, discipline, across our school department, middle school through high school, I think we're going to find the shortest path to achieving the desired result that we want with the Climate and the Morale Committee. And so I guess what I would encourage this administration to do is to find a way to take the knowledge that we have, to take that positive experience that Bob Toki has created in the Middle School East building, and find a way to roll that out to Stacy and to the high school. Because I think that not only does it better serve our students, who now have an understanding that the reason these rules are being enforced aren't because we want to enforce rules, we're not arbitrarily enforcing rules because someone put a policy handbook together, we're enforcing these rules because we want you to behave in a certain way because it's going to make you a better student, and it's going to make this building a better place for students to come to school. And if we can institutionalize that, and we can make that part of our culture, that's the shortest path, I believe, to correcting our climate, culture, and morale issues. So again, if we can focus on desired outcome and we can shift away from consequence, I think that some of the problems that we have in these surveys are going to turn around, turn around rather quickly. So I would, I would encourage, I'd encourage administrative team to put together a process.
A lot of times, a child would rather have the consequence, get out of class, get out of school.
It's easier. It's easier. You know, it's like suspension, it's in-house suspension versus out-of-school suspension, right? Out-of-school suspension is great, I'm going to go play Xbox now. But in-house suspension means I have to sit here in a room, you know, with one or, with one other student, and do all of my work, and not have the social time, not have the engagement, not have the opportunity in the building. So, you know, we can get the work done two ways, student. We can put you in a room, and we can make you do it, or we can let you engage with your peers and learn the way you're supposed to learn, and have a more enriching experience. And that's why that type of, of a discipline works better. And I couldn't agree with you more, Mike.
Yeah.
Great suggestion.
Miller Harry boot camp. Any other member? No? Thank you very much. Good job.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Next agenda item is reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Assessment, Dr. Kevin McIntyre.
Thank you, Sherman. I just have one more update for the committees on the homework forum, and I just wanted to report out on kind of how that went. First, I want to thank all the committee members who were able to attend that event. It just shows the support, general support for, I think, everything we're doing in the Milford Public Schools, and I sincerely appreciate it. I was also impressed by the turnout, which was well over a hundred, a hundred people, which is fantastic. You know, a number of, we did a brief presentation, and then a number of parents had the opportunity to kind of share some of their questions, their concerns, their comments around homework. And we, we're taking all that feedback in, you know, from a positive perspective, and I think I mentioned this to a couple of the members maybe earlier today, is that none of the comments we received were really anything we were surprised by, and they're comments that we've heard when we've engaged with parents in different settings and venues, both formal and informal. But I thought this was a great start to kind of a conversation that's been ongoing internally with our, with our faculty this year. And our, and our plan is to take this feedback, take some of our discussions, and really try to develop, I think, a plan at each level for kind of ways to, ways to make sure that, you know, the homework is meaningful, it's appropriate, and it's really connected to, like, the teaching and learning, and it's an extension of the teaching and learning that's, that's happening in the classroom. So I was really pleased with the event, I was happy by the, all the parent feedback, and I think it's, it's really going to help us kind of, I think, improve and develop better practices across the system, you know, connected specifically to homework.
Remember? I think one thing that hit me, Kevin, was that a couple of times, some parents got up, dual families working, getting home late at night, trying to get dinner going, and having time to, you know, to help the kids with their homework, and almost every single principal said, if you get into that situation, if you can at least make them read. You know, I thought was interesting, you know, make them read. Reading is, and again, it goes back to, it's so, so important, you know, to read, you know? And I've heard that over and over again.
Absolutely, and it's been a point of emphasis, and I think they're, you know, and I think Woodland's done this, and I think they're looking at it at the K-2 level as well, is it, it's, it needs to be that point of emphasis, and that needs to be a real focus of what the student is doing at, at home. We've kind of had informal conversations, and if, you know, a student has like four homework assignments, one of them is reading, and there's three other written assignments, what tends to happen is, reading tends to fall off, because the other assignments you're physically handing in. And what we really want to see happen is the reading becomes the top priority.
Right.
And, and, and math as well. I don't understand math, but, but that reading, which is kind of difficult to, to check, as opposed to like, you know, a piece of paper, or a written assignment, or some kind of, you know, project. But that, that's so critical to kind of a student's academic just development and their ability to engage, you know, more complex texts later on in their academic career.
Right, right. And then I thought Carrie's presentation was done very well, where she talked about homework at the high school level is more getting you ready for college. So you make, you'll get an assignment on Tuesday, it's not gonna be due until a week and a half down the road, and it's up to you to manage your time to get, get it done, get everything in your life, do what you want in your life. But bottom line is, on the seventeenth of March, this, you know, this project is due. So it's kind of different than in the lower grades, where you take this home, and this is, they use time, thirty minutes, thirty minutes, thirty minutes.
Right.
The high school level, they give you the homework and say, it's due here, you know, and all it is, is trying to get you ready for college. I thought that was a valid point, too.
Absolutely. There's a lot of, like, time management skills built into
Right.
that process, for sure.
Any other member? All right. And with that, we move on to the next agenda item, reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry?
Ah, yes, for the committee's approval this evening, I have six warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred, sixty dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of two hundred, seventy thousand, five hundred, thirty-nine dollars and one cent.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of one hundred, thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred, sixty-seven dollars and seven cents.
Motion from Joe, second from Patrick, all in favor?
The fourth warrant is in the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred, thirty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion from John, second from Pat, all in favor?
The fifth warrant is in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred, twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents.
Motion from Scott, second from Jen, all in favor?
And the last warrant is in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred, seventy-three dollars and forty-two cents.
Motion from Joe, Marius, Joe Calery, all in favor?
The committee also has the latest FY sixteen budget update. I would like to report, we do have a deficit area that we need to begin to watch now and, and further down the road, make up that deficit with, within our budget, and I will bring that to you within a few months. And that is under the Legal Department. I'm forecasting we will be in about thirty thousand dollars in the, in the red by the end of the school year. And that's outside contract services typically used for special ed.
Quick question on that is, and I realize that it's a specialty area from a law perspective, is there, and I don't know what the expertise with town council, is that something where we have access to town council for other areas where it may not be for special ed pieces, but where we could leverage town council for certain things to help offset the non-specialty legal expenses?
You're exactly right, Scott. So we look to Jerry Town Council for everything other than a, a case such as special ed that really
It's very specialized.
requires that specialized legal interest that we need. And we do have a couple cases that we have, we have out there right now that we need to use those resources for. The committee also has a personnel update, which includes all the latest hires from our, our previous meeting. And we do have a cost reimbursement request in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred, sixty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Does require a vote.
Yes. Motion from John, second from Joe, all in favor?
And that's all for this evening.
That's all you have? Okay, next agenda item, oh, go ahead.
Just one question. Kathy, I was approached by a teacher earlier today, is there a request for an out-of-state field trip that's coming in April for our hospitality group?
I don't have anything in the office.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not aware.
If my daughter made its way from the high school over to us yet.
That's fine. I just, it was something that was, I was literally at dinner this afternoon, and somebody said, oh, you're actually gonna have an out-of-state field trip, because we're, we're trying to go, we're trying to, the hospitality tourism is trying to go on an out-of-state field trip for that group. So I said, oh, okay. And I just wanted to make sure.
Well, the good news is we have
It's coming soon, so.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we weren't impacting their ability to attend.
I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay.
Okay. Next agenda item is Subcommittee Updates, Policy?
We had a meeting tonight, had a very good, very good conversation. And we didn't make much progress, but, but had a good conversation about, about homework. So more, more to come.
Okay.
That's fair.
Yeah.
That's fair. Well done.
Next Subcommittee is Wellness. First off, I want to apologize to Mrs. Dagnes and to the Wellness Committee. There was a meeting January twenty-seventh, and I missed it. For some reason, it was off my calendar. So if you bear with me, I do have the minutes from that meeting. I'd like to read them aloud. But again, I apologize for missing that meeting. Suicide Prevention Program, Nancy Half and four additional middle school staff members attended training in December. Plan is to have training offered in Milford on March eleventh for specialists, guidance adjustment counselors, health teachers, nurses, and other districts are invited. The third item that they talked about was the Game Change Program. Milford was one of a hundred and ninety-six districts selected to attend a three-day training at Gillette Stadium on the interpersonal violence. The training is sponsored by the Patriots Organization and the Kraft Foundation. And in Milford, three Stacy staff members will be attending. They're planning to have a Health Parent Night on March eighth at six P.M. The presenter will be the Stacy Health Educator, Nancy Half. It's called the Tween Years, What to Say and How to Say It. The Community Impact Services, Meg updated the committee on collaboration between Community Impact Counseling Service and the Milford Public School. Proposal by Amy Leoni has been submitted and approved for her practice to provide services to the students during the school day. And I know the reason for that is because they just, they don't have enough services for the children that need them. So that's a great idea. Educational Programs for Students and Parents Dealing with Behavioral Health Stress Issues, still looking for appropriate programs for parents. Will further research this matter. The Chanai Grant, they submitted a concept paper with the request to provide funding for the wellness nurse in our district. The position would allow, with the Community Health Improvement Plan, addressing behavioral issues, substance abuse, anxiety, and depression. The meeting prior to January twenty-seventh, we talked quite a bit about that, and there's a real issue of anxiety and, and depression and, as we all know, listening to the radio every day, drug abuse. So. The Summer Feeding Program, this was the program that started last summer that was very successful in, in the town. This is a Hockamark YMCA initiative with the support from the Walmart Foundation. Last year, a volunteer program was implemented by the Milford Humanitarian Coalition. Over two thousand lunches were served to Milford students during the summer. I know for a fact that the U Center was in it, Brookside Memorial, U Center, Trinity Church, they did, everybody did a great job. Healthy Kids Week is gonna be April eleventh through the fifteenth. There'll be school day games for our special athletes will take place on Thursday, April fourteenth. Jen Walsh is working to expand program, SSEC students this year. Jen is working with SED Department and Carolyn Ica Valley, an event planner to assist with the activities. And that's, that's a great week, if, if any of us can get out there. Elementary Physical Education, Diane was applauded for her intercontinental dance project with students from Spain. A YouTube video featuring her P.E. inclusion class dancing to the song of Dynamite was shared. Staff CPR, the latest recommendation from the Department of Public Health is that one staff to every fifty students be CPR trained. During the month of February, Heart Awareness Month, the Milford Public Schools will offer free CPR classes to interested staff. And Bob, I had a question on that. That came up last year, as far as the coaches, there were some coaches that weren't CPR trained?
Yes, so Chappie handles the training for all the coaches, and we provide training at no cost to staff members who express an interest in CPR.
And that could handle?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you.
And so Vinny Kizo is also a certified?
He is, yeah. And he'll do some training for us as well.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah.
So, uh, the Smoking Sensation Grant, after much effort by the Milford High School Nurse Lisa Caruso, we were able to find the required sixteen participants plus. We received recognition from UMMC and the Department of Public Health for our efforts in promoting this beneficial program in our district. School Garden and Greenhouse Initiative, this is Bob's, uh, baby, how's that coming?
Well, we need a beneficiary of a hundred thousand dollars. And so we need a benefactor to give us a hundred thousand, and we can make it happen. Aside from that, yeah, we, we'll be the beneficiary. We need a benefactor to give us a hundred thousand. That's about the cost of doing business.
You can always call it the Mean Greenhouse.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Ask Kevin, see if he might be interested. We have the design, we have the interest, we have the staff to support it. We just don't have the facility. And we're not at this point. And maybe Kevin will take it to the road or not, whether it's a future capital item or not, will be, remain to be seen. But as for this year, it's grow boxes that we have up there in the
Oh, it's better than nothing.
Absolutely right.
There's, we should minimize those grow boxes. There's nothing wrong with that.
None at all. None at all. And it's, it's, it's been great for, for our students, the pre-work program, we've been active in that. The, it, it has, it has room to, something to expand. Unfortunately, the greenhouse didn't come to fruition as I had hoped.
And the last is the Resources Suggestion was made to increase awareness about resources for behavioral health and substance abuse issues in our district. Ellen recommended resources such as yourteen.org, sponsored by Darlene Vittori, Dr. Katie Lee, an expert and analyst in health practices in Milford. Bob reported our Milford Public Schools website is being updated, and this could be done on it. This is a real area that the Wellness Committee is, is really looking into. And again, I go back to, not to be repetitive, but anxiety, depression, alcohol, substance abuse, they're really, really, you know, keyed in on it. So I know that was a lot, but I just, you know, I wanted to get that out there so that the community knows that the Wellness Committee is really working very, very hard for the Milford Public Schools, and they all do a great job. And again, you know, proud to be on that committee. So thank you for listening. Jen?
Just one question on the Community Impact Counseling. How is that being funded?
So we, that's third-party funded. So we work with Community Impact to provide mental health counseling services, but the insurance is billed for
So it's their family's private insurance?
That's correct.
But it's an additional resource for students beyond what the school just, I think it's tremendous that that's on
That one-month wait time that you might have at Arbor Health, Riverside Community Counseling.
Yeah, that's great. A great addition.
With, with Community Impact.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Middle School East?
Yeah, I can give a brief update on that one. I'll actually ask, if John wants to sort of share, or report on this one, just to maybe talk about what you and Steve Treadle did, but just as a way of starting. The, we met last week over vacation, School Vacation Week, just to talk more in-depth about the, the previous report that Scott gave about options, and it's just, you know, it's in general, as we call it, characters that is a concern, or about, there's real, there's real concern about how this building is used. It's a, it's a Main Street downtown. If this is just given up or, or given to sale, you run that tremendous risk of not having any control over what happens to it, provided it's within the zoning regulations. So there's just that discussion carried forward. There was discussion about possible town reuse of that space. We looked at some numbers that I provided to, at the request of Steve Treadle, the chairman of that group, what we currently have at Milford High School, sort of the ancillary offices that don't belong so much to Milford High School, but that are, that, what's that square footage, you know, look like? Similarly, on the town hall side, I think you had a discussion with, with Steve Treadle as well, or with Steve Cecil, or one of the Steves?
On the town side, I had a, I had a discussion, well, first, I had a discussion with town administrator about what kind of space needs my office might need, being the Department of Inspections, along with the Board of Health, what space needs they would have if, if we're to relocate some town offices. But separately from that, I met with Steve Treadle, Steve Cecil, and three engineers from his group to discuss, you know, the obstacles about changing the use of that building, whether it would be for residential use or office space. And this is, you know, in the context of, I guess, you know, selling or leasing the property. But what we've, what we realize is that most of this, most of these proposed new uses would trigger, would be considered a change of use from the building code, which would require full compliance to today's codes. So there's, there's a number of logistical problems with achieving full compliance, along with, you know, the overwhelming cost of, of achieving that compliance. So it's going to more or less eliminate certain uses, just on a cost basis.
Mm-hmm.
So they've been, you know, I think they've already, I don't think they've officially stricken any of the uses, but it, it seems to be heading in that direction is, is what I garnered from that conversation. The other portion of it is the handicap accessibility. That's different from building code compliance, even though it's, it's part of, it's an indirect part of the building code. Something, one of the triggers for full compliance with handicap accessibility is if you spend more than thirty percent of the actual cash value of a building on a renovation, the building has to become completely compliant with today's handicap codes. And that's, there's some elements in that that would be, you know, major undertakings, things, you know, existing stairways typically don't meet today's handicap accessibilities. We had, you know, the same issue in some other buildings in town. That's just one example.
We call the elevator being something of a conversation as well?
Yeah.
The location of it or the access to it?
The location of the elevator is an, is an obstacle if you're going to split the use of the building between several entities, because you're gonna have the elevator, which is part of the, the staircase, which is, by today's code, would be an enclosure that has a fire separation from the other building and the elevator. So there's, there could be a compliance issue with that. But that would depend on what uses were, were being shared in, in that building, if it were, you know, partly educational and partly something else. I don't know what else.
Yes, like, so for example, you had to access, the town would retain the gymnasium for community use. In order to access the gymnasium, you'd have to be able to get to the elevator to access that floor. But if that part of the building were being used for something else, and the gym was isolated, you'd have to come up with an ADA solution that, as I understand it.
That's correct, but that's not what they were talking about in, in the context of the elevator and the, and the enclosure and the fire separation. It's two, it's two separate elements. So there's one with, you know, the building codes and the location of the elevator compared to the, the exit corridors and, and staircase. But the, another component is that if you're gonna separate, you know, the, I guess, the middle of the building, the, the educational piece that, that fronts Sumner Street, then the gym goes hand in hand with that, because the gym needs to remain accessible. So the only, you know, the only access, you know, handicap accessibility is, is with the elevator, which is part of that educational wing. So those two pieces, those two elements pretty much go hand in hand. They can't be separated.
Yeah, it's been an ongoing discussion within that board, ongoing, which is, and when the Cecil group had come in, that was one of the things that they made very clear right off the bat. This is not a turnkey building that if you were to just say, we're gonna turn, we've decided we're gonna turn it into, we're gonna make use of it for town offices, that we can just say that it's gonna be great, and we're moved students out on Friday, and Monday we'll move town offices. No. No, there's, there's gonna be a lot of, and that's part of what they're exploring. There's gonna be a lot of, of work that would need to be done if that ends up being the case, or, or ultimately, whatever use is going to be done for that building. Because it is gonna be, to your point, John, a substantial change in the use of the building. That's, there's costs.
Yeah, I mean, and some of them are pretty
In some cases are substantial.
Some of them are pretty involved. I mean, you have design gravitational loads, which are different for, that are educational use versus a different use. And then you have seismic loads. And so like, the gravitational loads, we'd probably be okay with. It's, it's a pretty well-built building, but the seismic loads could be a, a real obstacle.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, you know, there's so many moving pieces to this.
Oh, yeah. But that's the
It was a very productive meeting. It was maybe an hour, hour and a half.
Great. That's good.
As that's the update on Middle School East reuse today.
Patrick, what's on School Building Committee?
We met last week. So I, I have been pleased to report this at every single one of our meetings, and I can report it again. We are on time and on budget, which is a wonderful thing for a sixty-two million dollar project. Many of the interior finishes are being completed now. Bathrooms have tile, paint is going up on walls, ceilings are being hung. If you walk through it now, it, it almost looks like a school building, which is, which is just a terrific, terrific thing to see. One of the pieces that we're putting together now is the technology plan. So right now, we, the plan of the committee is to try and access our E-rate for the school, for the Woodland School Building, to pay for some of the plumbing in the building. So the E-rate, as we all know, can't pay for machines, but it can pay for the pipes that deliver the information to those, to those machines. So we're looking at doing that. That frees up some room to purchase some more Chromebooks for the building, which is great. So, you know, should we choose to go forward with a, a one-to-one technology initiative in that building, or do they wanna test it, or see, see how it's gonna work with our blended model? We have the flexibility of, of doing that. And the reason we could do that was because of the money freed up by the E-rate for the Woodland School Building. So that's a, it's a great thing. We reviewed some of the, well, not some of the, we reviewed the entire playground plan. The playground looks awesome. It's going to be, the service provider is Compan, Compan?
Compan, yes.
They are the ones who put some of the, some of the play areas that we have in the town park, so sort of the unique-looking powder-coated steel, sort of spinners and, and playthings that we have down in the town park, um, that's the provider, and so those look really great. I know my kids happen to love them, so I think it'd be great that we'll have more children will have access to them. It's gonna be a really, really impressive play space, um, in the back of that building. And so everything is, everything is, is moving along as it should. Uh, there was one piece that we were looking at, about building a fence, um, between, uh, our neighbors on Cypress Ave and, uh, and the school building itself, and sort of going back and forth on that in terms of, you know, offering privacy and an extra measure of, of security, so privacy to the residents, an extra measure of security to the school building. Of course, we don't wanna restrict access, because that's gonna be a very well-used playground by all of, uh, all of Milford residents, as it should be, right? It, it belongs to taxpayers, and so they should have, they should have access to it. So, just a lot of really good things happened, sort of all the, the finishing touches are going into the building now, and it's exciting to see, you know, I'm, I'm four, five years into this process right now, um, so it's, it's great to see it sort of finally coming to fruition and having a, a building there, and I, I believe the time lapse is up now, Bob, you said?
It is, yes, on our website, uh, if you ever, anyone's interested in checking it out, it's, it's a, a nice, um, collection of images from the start of the project, and then you'll see a point on there, the camera got relocated, because we thought we could actually see it through the trees, and then the trees grew in, so, but it is, um, it is up and running, so, and it's, and it's up to current day.
And everybody got the email on Saturday the fifth, we're going on the, the tour?
Actually, um, right before vacation, I actually had an opportunity to, Jonathan Bruce, the co-chair of the, of the Building Committee, actually, uh, took me on a tour of the building. If you've not been in it, and certainly if you can make every effort to go on that March fifth day, uh, it's unbelievable. Uh, the, the fact that they're able to use natural light in the middle floor of a building, and on, and on the entry floor, that's coming in from the, coming in from the roof, and not wasting of space is unbelievable. Um, the picture that we actually have in our presentation for this evening, um, I actually got an opportunity with, and I was walking through, I can tell that that building's on the third floor, 'cause each floor is actually, has a different theme, which is kinda neat with the way that the painting and the decorations has been done. The third floor is actually the clouds in the sky, which is why I knew that one was on the third floor, 'cause it's blue and white. Middle floor is around the trees and the canopy, and the bottom is ground cover, and the, and the first floor is all ground cover, and the, and the, the painting and the ex, and the, and the artwork that's been put in, that's being put in the building, actually goes through those themes, which is kind of a neat way to be able to integrate the whole building. Um, and actually, some of the murals that are built up are trees that literally go up through, from the, from the ground cover, all the way up into the sky, and that's where you skip the third, that's where you get the natural light flowing in. So it's, it's really the, the amazing use of, of natural light, um, which will, and the, and the efficiencies of the building are just incredible. Uh, the gym spaces that are available, the theater sta, the theater space that's available, we're adding yet another really fully functional theater that's gonna be coming into this as well, which is, which is amazing, but it was, I'd certainly thank you to Jonathan for, for, you know, volunteered and said, listen, I'm, I'm gonna be on the site, do you wanna come? Yeah, absolutely, this is actually the Saturday of, um, actually, I apologize, this was actually on Monday, uh, this was on President's Day, and I'd said, you know, how's the project, and to Patrick's point, it's, you know, on time and on budget, and I'd said to Jonathan, who's, who's got a fairly extensive construction background, I said, well, you know, so how do you know that they're on time? And he said, today's a holiday, sort of? I said, yeah, and they're not here working. He said, if they were behind, they'd be here. They were behind, they'd be there on Saturdays, 'cause they were. When we were working on the, and first going through the project to stay on time and stay on track, those groups were working six, seven days a week, and, and certainly it's, it's, it's impressive to see, but it was a neat building, so certainly encourage, if you've not been through the building, or been through it recently, March fifth, definitely take, take the opportunity, 'cause it's impressive. It feels like a school.
If you could make a note, I did have somebody reach out to me, I guess in the present Woodland School, there's a portrait of Mr. Shaughnessy, who was the first principal of the Woodland School, and if it's not gonna be moved to the new school, the family would like it. Okay?
Yep.
And they said if it's gonna be moved, they're fine, but if it's not, they would, they would like the opportunity to have it.
I'll find out, report back.
Thank you. Joe?
Just had a question on, on the E-rate submission, Patrick, is that part of the district-wide E-rate submission, or is that a separate submission?
So, we have monies that are available for the Woodland School, that we hadn't been discussing having access to, because we were taking the Woodland School offline. Um, it turns out, we can use the monies that were set aside for the Woodland School to benefit the Woodland School, 'cause it's our, it's our school. So, um, those monies weren't gonna be used by us, um, and so now they, now they can be in, in the Woodland Building, 'cause we hadn't, we hadn't been considering it, but the Building Committee has.
Okay, so that's part of the application you're submitting? Oh, it's not?
No, the, um, technology architects will submit the E-rate process.
Okay, for that, for that building. Okay.
It's the same funding, but it's a different, different submission.
Right, I saw Kathy's working on the application now, and I didn't know if she was doing that submission, or if they were doing it on their own. Um, and then the only other question I had, somewhat related, so you mentioned that the provider for the play area, so Memorial is looking into redoing their playground as well, right? Are they trying to piggyback off of this and try and find some value there, or?
The last I heard, Lisa was looking at developing some specs and drawings and finding a vendor and trying to build some quotes, so she knew what she had to fund or work with. So I don't know if she actually got any schematics.
Yeah, she was looking at a few different vendors, I recall.
Yeah, she was trying to find a couple.
She's written with Rockwood on that. Compan was one of them, though.
Yeah.
Um, I believe, I'm not sure, uh, what the one or two were.
The, um, the Compan stuff is, is amazing. Um, I wonder if it's, the stuff that I've seen by them, was so, certainly the climbing structures are great, they'd be age-appropriate for, you know, for Memorial. Um, I don't know that some of the other sort of spinning type stuff is or not, I'm not sure, I don't know.
Yeah, the, um,
It's, I mean, it's, it's really cool stuff.
It is, it is, and it's, it's very durable.
Yeah.
And it's not on the mulch like we have in a lot of our places, it's on that, that, whatever you call that padding on the, the ground padding of it.
It's nice, though, you put climbing equipment in a playground, but you don't let 'em climb at home.
Patrick, I'm just curious, has the, um, does the Building Committee know when the furniture bids will be coming available, or when you'll award them? Has that come up at all?
So, we're in the process of, of, of building out the furniture bids, there's some pieces that are still in place.
Okay.
So, we sent out, um, uh, we sent out sort of the, the general specifications of, we, we haven't, I think we're gonna act on it in our next meeting, Bob.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's around now, I know that the, uh, the bid process is for furniture.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Just for planning.
I think at our next Building Committee meeting, I believe the intent was to have those bids back.
Okay, good.
I don't know, it might be before, and if it is, um, I'll certainly reach out to Aldo and say, Kathy needs to know, would like some visibility on that, and we'll get it as soon as possible.
I expect there'll be a lot of work.
Offer the, uh,
A lot of different vendors.